I'm going to call to order this regular city council meeting for the city of Lacey. It's June 17th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. All council members are present, but council member Stedman is with us remotely. And with that, if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like, would also like to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Mezzin Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawksan Indian Tribe. There's a change to our agenda, so I will make the motion to approve the agenda as amended to add item 6B, the proclamation for Pride Month, and remove item 8A, the Resolution 1169, and to approve the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. And first up on our amended agenda, first is, under Proclamations, is Juneteenth.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas our great country is made up of people from every nation on earth, who are declared equal not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy society, and?
Whereas Black and African-American people were bought and sold as slave labor for 250 years in North America and then in the United States of America, and suffered unspeakable acts of violence and oppression, leaving a catastrophic and unrelenting legacy of trauma for generations of African-Americans, and?
Whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the enslaved people in Confederate territories to be free and paving the way for the 13th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution abolishing slavery in our nation, and?
Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation, signed by President Lincoln over two and a half years prior, and freed all remaining enslaved people in the state of Texas, and?
Whereas formerly enslaved Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings. And as freed families immigrated from Texas to other parts of the United States, they carried the Juneteenth celebration with them, and Juneteenth is now a worldwide celebration which commemorates the end of slavery in the United States of America, and?
Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, and Emancipation Day, is a day of profound significance celebrating the emancipation of slavery, and a day that reminds us in our incredible capacity to heal and emerge from our darkest moments with purpose, resolve, and unity, and?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby recognize and commemorate June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Lacey, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community groups to explore this important celebration of American culture, history, and pride. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date.
We have Larry.
Proclamation. Thank you. Say a few words.
Lift every voice and sing. Till earth and heaven ring, ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise as high as the listening skies, and let it resound as loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us, and sing a song full of hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on, let us march on, let us march on until victory is won. I think General Order 3 from Major General Gordon Granger is a great order. And that order informed the people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between fore-masters and slaves, and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor. The freed are advised to remain at their present home and work for wages. They are informed they will not be allowed to collect at military posts, and they will not be supported in idleness either there or elsewhere. Just a little bit of history about that, this area, is that Mexico ruled this land in this area between 1821 and 1835. They had gained their independence from Spain, and one of the things that they gained the independence from was slavery. They abolished slavery. However, they allowed Stephen F. Austin and a band to move there. They brought slaves with them, and they were planting cotton. In, Texas became a republic in 1836, and it was a republic between 1836 and 1845. And we can, we all know about the thing about the Alamo. Remember the Alamo. Remember the Alamo. Well, remember the Alamo was to keep slaves. And I think that's very important. But during that period of time, the Republic of Texas suffered from invasions, had economic turmoil, but it became a state in 1845. Texas is the 28th state. There was the Mexican-American War in 1846 through 1848, and there was a compromise that allowed Texas to become a slave state. Around 1860, Texas was the fifth-largest cotton producer. The Emancipation Proclamation was done on January 1st, 1963, and what's important about that is that the proclamation wasn't listened to. Nobody heard it, or those that heard it kept fighting, kept rebelling. They kept rebelling after Lee surrendered on April 9th of 1865. I was listening to a podcast last night, and they were, this order's read in Galveston, which was a port area, and so port is always getting all this information. So, people already knew that the war was over. People already knew that they were, that they were free. They just couldn't publicly say it, because to publicly pronounce it meant to be maybe killed or beaten. And so there was force that was still needed, and that's what this proclamation gave rise to. The Galveston Daily News on January 1st, 1865 saw it like this. Their freedom can never make them the equals of the white race. God himself has made a marked distinction between the white and black races, with no human laws nor all the abolition the world can ever obliterate. Well, we can, and we are, and we are marching on until victory is won. My great-great-grandmother, Carrie Crawford Smith, was born in 1877. She was born in Nashville, Tennessee, and somehow she graduated from college in 1897 when she was 20 years old. She couldn't do that on her own. She had a professor, Professor Scribner, who she named my great-uncle after, Melvin Scribner Smith, who went on to write newspapers and do all sorts of wonderful works. There was a community that supported her. There was a community, and I kind of think that community looked like this. It looked like the city of Lacey that came around and made sure that she had housing, education, was able to create a wonderful foundation for her family. That's what we're doing here in Lacey with our history of how we came together, however hard it was that we did come together. We have come together, and we're letting this victory of what we're doing march on together, and I'm just so excited to know as a Black man, as, as a Black family, that there is love here in the city of Lacey, not just only for my family, but for all of our families, and that's something that NAACP is completely, completely, we are marching on, we're doing it together. Hooray to the city of Lacey! Hooray to Juneteenth! Hooray to all of us and all the love that we want to give to one another! We're doing it today! We're winning today! Let victory march on! Let victory march on and on! Thank you very much!
Well, that was amazing. We do have one more proclamation. It's for LGBTQIA+ Pride Month for 2025.
City of Lacey Proclamation. Whereas this month is internationally recognized as Pride Month, commemorating the Stonewall uprising of June 28th, 1969, an act of resistance against police brutality and oppression, and a pivotal moment in the ongoing struggle for LGBTQIA+ civil rights, and?
Whereas the legacy of Stonewall has inspired generations to pursue equality, dignity, and visibility for all LGBTQIA+ people, and Pride Month serves as both a celebration of progress and a reminder of the ongoing work to ensure safety, exception, acceptance, and inclusion for everyone regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and?
Whereas Washington State has championed progress in LGBTQIA+ rights, notably passing anti-discrimination protections in 2006 and 2009 for sexual orientation and gender identity respectively, and enshrining marriage equality through a voter-approved referendum in 2012, and continues to advance significant statewide protections and initiatives today, and?
Whereas the LGBTQIA+ community has made invaluable contributions to the social, cultural, and economic fabric of Lacey and throughout Washington, strengthening the city's diversity, viability, and?
Whereas despite significant progress, LGBTQIA+ individuals continue to face disproportionate challenges, including discrimination, housing insecurity, and threats to their rights and well-being, making public affirmation and allyship more important than ever, and?
Whereas the city of Lacey proudly supports and uplifts LGBTQIA+ individuals and affirms its commitment to ensuring that all community members are treated with dignity and respect, and have the freedom to live openly and authentically, and?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Lacey, and reaffirms the city's unwavering commitment to protecting and uplifting the LGBTQIA+ communities and standing resolutely against hate in all forms. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date.
And we have the Commissioner, the Commissioner to come up.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah. I'm proud to accept this. We are, we've heard at the Commission on Equity for the last three or so years that the LGBTQIA+ community want more visibility in Lacey, and, and more, this yearly proclamation is really important, but other, other things, Lacey is delivering. So, we have the, we've worked on the flag. Now, the flag, the progressive flag that includes all, hang, fly in all the places that the Lacey flag flies, and we have had listening, the Commission has had listening forums where the community come and, and tell us what's going on, what they need. And then the neat thing happened last Friday. We had the Pride-themed night market, and that has been, oh, an idea in the works for a while, and then it just, it just came up. So, it was a huge success, and there was a lot of community members there. There were parents, grandparents, siblings in a safe, supported, fun place to be. Also, at the city booth was the, the proclamation for anti-hate and the one for Trans Visibility Day, so people can see it's not just a piece of paper, but this, this is what we Day, so people can see it's not just a piece of paper, but this, this is what we stand by and stand for. And just, one other thing that in some of the publications about the Night Market, it didn't say Pride-themed. And so, there was a lot of folks that found themselves in this really vibrant, you know, vibe, and were having a good time.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. I'm, I'm delighted to accept the proclamation of Pride Month for the city of Lacey and for all queer people that live in this city. I would like to remind everyone that Pride started as a protest and remains a protest. It was led by queer, trans, people of color that have paved the way for us and that are now currently under attack in this country. And in that spirit, I would like to remind everybody that living authentically and showing up as ourselves is in itself a form of protest, and regardless of where you are and how you show up, it is okay to exist. So, I thank you again, Mayor Ryder and the council of the city of Lacey, for this proclamation, and I am completely elated to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Point of personal preference. I'd like to take a roll call vote of the council on how difficult it was to read those, especially the second proclamation after Larry and Annie and John, you know, said what they said. It's, you know, it, it, it makes me swell with pride. Our, our city and the acceptance and the love we have for each other. So, it's, it was really difficult to get through that second proclamation after Larry, but I, I felt that I had to say something because it was that special.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Let's go on to our next agenda IM, which is public comment. And we have a couple people who signed up here, and let's go with you guys first, and then we have someone who's online that we'll go to next. So, first up is Marin Gadman.
Good evening. My name is Marin Gadman, proud Lacey resident, and also a proud board member for Thurston County Fair. So, thank you, Mayor, and council members for hearing us. I would like to share with you that our fair is one hundred and fifty-four years old. It has been in the current location since nineteen fifty-eight. We continue to grow and evolve. And this year, we're kind of taking it back a little bit. We're going back to the nineteen eighties. Our theme this year is Disco Dave the Peacock. We have a statue that has been carved from wood. It's about four and a half feet tall, beautifully decorated, is currently at the atrium, if you'd like to stop by and take a look at it. And we would also, we are here to invite the elected officials to come to our welcoming ceremony, which will be Thursday, July thirty-first. And we, that evening, we are also having a disco dance contest. So, all of you are invited, and Mayor Ryder, I was at your wedding. I know you were ready for this.
I have the outfit, for sure.
So, we hope that you can all make it here. I'd like to introduce our president, Paul Longwell. He has the invitations.
Paul, you're up next.
Hi, my name's Paul Longwell. I'm president of the fair board. I want to thank you guys for your support, and I want you to know one thing about your proclamations you just made. After a hundred and fifty years of the Thurston County Fair in Thurston County, this is the first year we've been able to fly a pride flag on our flagpole. We're working very hard on making sure that the whole county is inclusive, invited, and welcomed. If we have something that shows a little bit of one side or the other, we're changing the sign to make sure it's an inclusive, and we mean it, and everybody in the community is welcome with open arms. We're working very hard for that. She just invited you two to the welcoming ceremony. We want you to bring your dancing shoes, because we're going to be putting on some disco. So, I have some invites for you guys. Oops.
I would also like to introduce Thomasina Cooper. She is our Thurston County Fairgrounds manager.
Right, and so your last.
Mayor, am I allowed to speak?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomasina Cooper. I am the proud manager of the Thurston County Fairgrounds and Event Center. I am here this evening with my fabulous board members in hand, with the invitations to our welcoming ceremonies. As Paul indicated, we are proud to be flying the pride flag this month for the first time. That is absolutely something we are working on, is showing that our, our fairgrounds is for everybody here in our community. I also wanted to take a moment to thank you for your investment in the fair this year through the Lodging Tax Advisory Funds. That is a significant gift, and we are doing good work with it. We are increasing our advertising, especially in our fifty-plus mile away areas, so we can increase our tourism here and increase the attendance at our fair. It is going to be a ton of fun. There is going to be a lot of dancing. There's going to be a lot of disco, if that is not your jam. On Saturday, I believe at two PM, we have the Boot Scoop Babes coming, and they are going to teach us all how to line dance. So, boogie your way on down to the Thurston County Fair this year, Thursday, July thirty-first through Sunday, August third. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else from here and council chambers wishing to address the council? And we do have one person from online. Mike Ruth? Is Mike online?
Yes, I'm here. Do you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. Mike, introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Mike Ruth. I want to thank you, Mayor Ryder, and the council members for allowing me to speak tonight to the council. I'm speaking in opposition to a road project, Project A4, the Log Cabin Road Extension. This is, of course, a hot topic these days, and I want to begin in the tone of gratitude to the Thurston Regional Planning Council, and in particular, to Chair Robin Vasquez and Vice Chair Carolyn Cox. They allowed at the recent June meeting a robust discussion to listen to the unique qualities of the LBA Woods, and to respect and consider, really hundreds of citizen comments that were asking to save this park from an outdated and destructive road development. The, the Log Cabin Road Extension is in the regional transportation plan, and I believe it's an error, and I want to commend the respect of the, I want to commend Chair Vasquez and Carolyn Cox for respecting the Olympia City Council's decision to remove this road from their comprehensive plan, which was a movement that was undertaken in two thousand twenty-one. Now, we hear a lot to note that the, that the project, the Log Cabin Road Extension, is a road of regional significance, but I want to submit that the LBA park is a park of regional significance. It, I think, is the only park in the county that has miles of trails and over a hundred acres of forest that does not have a road going through the middle of it. So, I hope and ask that when the Transportation Policy Board reconvenes in July, I believe it's the ninth of July, that the TBB honors the TRPC's guidance and respects Olympia's discussions and decisions when they resume and reconsider taking that road out of the regional transportation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We also did receive two written public comments. With that, we'll go on to our next agenda IM, which is Ordinance sixteen seventy-nine, the twenty twenty-five budget amendment. But before you do that, can you speak to why we're taking the Resolution eleven sixty-nine? Why we remove that?
Sure, you bet. Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Really, the resolution it was before you was a standby loan, and new news, actually just recently, this week, we don't actually need that loan or the authorization for that loan. So, we were a little bit worried about the cash flow of that capital fund. As you recall, the development of Kyo Park was about six point four million dollars. We had about a million dollars in grant proceeds that was going to fund that. And this was a project that was fast-tracked to be completed by the end of June to meet the requirements of one of the grants. So, two things happened. One, we, the project's a little bit delayed, so it's going to go past that June thirtieth. Another thing is we've already received those grant proceeds, so the fear of not having that million dollars is much less now, today, so I'm a lot more comfortable. On the second grant, we've actually already submitted the reimbursement for that, and I expect to have that in the next two to three weeks. So, really, the need for that loan is no longer.
Okay, thank you. And I was talking to city manager earlier this week, and I had discussed that in the future, if we were in this circumstance, can we just do a budget amendment to pull over those dollars and then do another budget amendment, so we wouldn't have to pay interest on that?
We could. One of the other issues that I was thinking about was, at some point during the legislative session, one of those grants was in danger of not being funded, so we would have needed some time to figure out where we're going to find that additional half million dollars. So, so there was kind of a twofold reason for having that loan. One was just from a cash flow standpoint. The other one was to give us a little bit of time to try to figure out the full funding for the park. So, yeah, we certainly could go that other route and just do a transfer of reserves in the meantime. But, yeah, it was just the.
Luckily, we didn't have to, don't have to consider that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And so, on to the Ordinance sixteen seventy-nine. Oh, or no, is it, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. It's a song. Can you hear me? And Council, my name's Chelsea Yarwood, the county manager in the finance department. For your consideration, tonight is an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-five budget. On your desk is a very recently updated staff report and associated Exhibit A because of that inter-fund loan that's no longer going to occur. The staff report details the major components of the budget amendment, most of which you were already briefed on in the April twenty-second work session. So, I'm not going to talk about everything, but I'll just hit on a few major items. The first one is the Rainier Vista Tennis Court resurfacing. The first time you were briefed on that, the estimate was eighty-five thousand dollars. The actual quote came in, and it's closer to a hundred thousand dollars, which is inclusive of tax. And so, as a reminder, this is being fully funded by the Thurston County Pickleball Club in preparation for the Washington State Senior Games, which is happening in August of this year. The next item is the College Street and Seventh Avenue Roundabout. There's a total of about one point three million dollars of reserves being transferred to the arterial street fund. Three hundred thousand of that's coming from the general fund. One million is coming from the city street fund. On April fifteenth, council authorized the city manager to sign an MOU for this project. So, this amendment enables the initiation of the design process to begin. Next is police station debt. So, the twenty twenty-five budget did not account for any of the debt transactions associated with the Lacey Police Station and Training Center build. The debt hadn't been issued yet at the time that we finalized the twenty twenty-five budget, so now those dollars and figures are available for us to include in the budget, which is why we need the amendment. In twenty twenty-five, the annual debt service payment for the project is going to be one million forty thousand dollars, and that's being funded through rate revenue. Next is the Kyo Park. This, you guys just talked about a little bit. This is really kind of the reason for a mid-year budget amendment. Normally, we're only before you for this purpose in September, but we're here mid-year just to really watch the cash flow related to this project. The total project estimate is roughly five hundred nineteen thousand more than the original engineer's estimate, so we just want to make sure we're keeping a close look at the cash balances. So, this is a request to transfer from five hundred nineteen thousand dollars from the general fund to the Parks and Open Space Fund. And this is really, budget authority will only transfer dollars if they end up being needed. If they aren't, then we, then we won't move the money. The last individual item I want to call out is the RAC Phase Three latecomer charge. This is three hundred twenty-nine thousand and forty dollars. This fee was paid in advance of the project actually starting, and this was to just avoid interest costs. The latecomer agreement is associated with North Thurston Public Schools extending the city sewer in that area, and so it made it possible for associated properties to connect to the city sewer, which, that's our parcel, that RAC Phase Three parcel is on that same right-of-way. So, we had a portion of the fee to pay. Also, in the staff report is a summary table that shows the total dollar impacts by fund. The majority of the transactions are tied to one-time capital and debt. And then, we do intend to come back in September like we normally would for a final budget amendment, and we expect that those items will be related to utility project adjustments and just kind of other activity, but we'll, of course, keep you updated if any major things come up in between time. So, with that, the staff recommendation is to adopt Ordinance sixteen seventy-nine to amend the twenty twenty-five budget as presented, and I'm also happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt Ordinance number one six seven nine, amending the twenty twenty-five budget as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Go ahead.
Why do they call it a latecomers agreement? Did we just jump on at the last second, or is that more of a term of art?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's basically that somebody developed it initially, and then anyone coming later will pay their portion, once they're able to utilize it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was paid for upfront, and so they got to, they get to reimburse it. Yeah, yeah. So, I have a, I have a question regarding the budget amendment for our LNI. I know that LNI claims have gone up significantly, you know, looking three years back, and that's how this works when you're in a, when a pool like this. And there's a lot of LNI pools out there that have found themselves in trouble and have had to go be a little more strict on who's allowed in pool and have some guidelines around making sure people, for example, can return to work for light duty and so on and so forth. Do, do we have any guidelines for being in our, for this labor pool? Or is it just, you're saying you can, you belong and you don't have to follow any specific rules?
That's a great question, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure, but, you know, typically, pools do have, you know, certain guidelines, and if, you know, experience ratings or whatnot end up falling outside of those, I think there's probably a corrective action or a period in which an entity can make correction. But I'm not exactly positive about this particular pool, but that's in general how pools work. You know, I feel a little bit ill-equipped because you have such great experience in this area, but it's, it's.
I didn't think I was going, you know, I've, I have a ton of experience in this because the, my business happens to be in a pool, and I happen to be on the board of directors for the, you know, for the association that handles it, and I'm actually the chair of that. So, I've learned so much about this recently, and this can be like a really, really big deal right now, because these sort of costs are going out, you know, kind of going out of control, because, you know, there's a whole bunch of reasons. And so, we actually hired an outside person come in and, and give us some advice on how to sort of have our pool be less, less risky. And, and so, I was just, I was just curious if AWC has gone through that same thing or what they're doing. Maybe I'll be, we can talk offline and, and learn a little bit more about that, because these costs could escalate quite quickly and really become a huge budget hit for us. And so, it's probably worth looking into a little bit more.
True, you bet. It's, yeah, I mean, that's really the reason you have a pool, is to mitigate that risk over a number of entities. So, if one entity has a bad year, but if we all have bad years, that's bad for the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
And we, there's probably even some things that we can sort of lobby for on the state side. There's some things that we, when you look at, are, seem very, very unfair when we've looked into the numbers a little bit more, and so maybe we can have some more conversations about that, too.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, anything else? Then there's a. Then there's a motion and second to adopt ordinance 1679, amending the 2025 budget as presented. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is ordinance 1680, the sign regulations. I'll turn this over to Rick and Dave.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll be handling this one. Deputy Mayor, council members. Before you, this evening is another ordinance, proposed ordinance number 1680, which is related to signs. And what this ordinance would do would be amend a particular section, a specific section of the Lacey Municipal Code to allow political signs in the right-of-way adjacent to private property. Now, currently, political signs are only allowed on private property, and they're not allowed in the right-of-way at all. Now, this proposed amendment was prompted by concerns raised by community members as to whether or not our sign code particularly followed certain provisions of the Washington State and U.S. Constitution. There was a concern that it may, our sign regulation may infringe on the law governing free speech. You know, the proposed amendment would eliminate any location-based restriction for political sign and allow it in the right-of-way only adjacent to private property, wouldn't allow it in the right-of-way adjacent to public property. And that's because of the prohibition for government to utilize public property for the, for political purposes, for the, for the support or opposition of a candidate or for a proposition itself. As such, so this amendment would only allow it in the right-of-way adjacent to private property. There would be no change to any applicable size, safety, durational standards. Everything else would remain status quo. This amendment is gonna, it would provide, it would do a couple of things. It would, it would help ensure that the city's sign code is constitutional, of course. That's a pretty good goal. It would also provide clear guidance to code enforcement in the Community and Economic Development Department about how to enforce the sign code. And so, you know, the Planning Commission has already reviewed this. They reviewed this on May 28th. They held a public hearing on June 11th. They voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed amendments. And so that's what our recommendation is this evening, is that council approve ordinance 1680. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I get motion, please?
Move to approve ordinance 1680 related to sign regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Go ahead.
So, in your opinion then, Dave, the way we, if we didn't make this change, do you think that our current sign ordinance then is out of sync with federal and state law?
It's certainly arguable. And, yeah, I mean, there, I am recommending that the council amend it. And so I do think there's some, some concern there.
And the reason I'm asking the question is, and I'm sure I'm not the only one on this council, has heard from the public every election cycle how much they hate the signs, right? We hear it constantly. Everyone hates the yard signs, particularly when they're in public right-of-way because even though they've not been allowed in the past, we all know that people still put them in the public right-of-way, and they get removed and all of that. So that's the reason I'm asking is I know the public in general doesn't like these signs, but obviously I will support this because I do think it's important that we stay within federal and state guidelines. We wouldn't wanna be breaking federal law.
Go ahead.
I'm assuming they still wouldn't be allowed in, like, roundabouts, and there'd still be some off-limits, you know, if there's safety issues.
Correct. There's elsewhere in the sign code are several provisions related to safety and concern and line of sight and intersections. And so, yeah, it would only allow them within what's been deemed to be a traditional public forum. And that is the, the land between edge of sidewalk and the curb on the side of the road. So not in the roundabout, not, you know, not outside of that traditional public forum area. And even within that area, if it would obstruct line of sight for an intersection or overhang into the street, you know, those, those wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, and obviously, like, within the roundabout, that there's no private property adjacent to that, so that would be all public property, so it wouldn't be allowed. I'm curious of how you came up with the size. It says no larger than 10 square feet, so...
So that's not new language. That, that size has previously been in there.
Okay, for political signs?
Correct.
Got it.
It's a lot more expensive to make those size signs, though.
Is there any other questions?
All if things remain, the duration and the...
Everything else is unchanged. This is a very, very concise amendment.
And this doesn't obviously affect signs being placed, like, in places that are under neighborhoods?
Private, private property is still private property. And private property adjacent to right-of-way, underlying that right-of-way, it's just an easement over private property. So it wouldn't impact a private property owner or an organization from not wanting signs on their property.
But I was just curious, 'cause, right, so if it's a city street, though, and you're allowed to put it in a city street, isn't, wouldn't this be allowed no matter where it's at? If it's on, if it's in the right-of-way of, of, next to... Even though they have a covenant against it, wouldn't it still be allowed according to the sign ordinance?
They're permissive within the right-of-way adjacent to private property. It's not mandatory that every property owner authorize signs within the right-of-way adjacent to their property.
Sure.
Are you asking about like a covenant restriction of HOA?
Yeah, so we hear this all the time, where there's an HOA, and political signs aren't allowed within an HOA. But if it's a right-of-way, it's a public right-of-way within an HOA, it's still public right-of-way. Wouldn't that be override the HOA?
HOAs have to allow it, but it's only for a certain, like, they have to have a certain amount of time it's allowed, so that's...
Yeah, there's case law that HOAs can't stop you as a homeowner from putting political signs in your yard.
Yeah. Or especially, I'm, like, in particular, the right-of-way in this circumstance, right? That's where I'm curious.
There's always gonna be questions that pop up, and I'll get back to you later with a more concise, definitive answer.
I mean, 'cause that's, yeah, that's an interesting one because if it's a pub, if it's a road, then it has, there's a right-of-way regardless if it's in a... Anyway, I was, that's...
I know when, I lived in HPCA, that they had a 45-day, you couldn't have it out there more than 45 days before the election.
Okay. Well, is there any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt this new, the ordinance 1680 regarding sign regulations. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. So next up on our amended agenda is the Mayor's Report, and I do have one. I have a reappointment for Tiffany Walker for the Human Services, on the Human Services Committee. And the reason why this is a reappointment, she's actually currently on the Human Services Work Group. However, she moved outside of the City of Lacey limits. However, we also have within that, when we formed it, that we're allowing a, the Human Service Commission needs two professionals with a human services experience, and they may live outside the City of Lacey. So Tiffany Walker works at a human service provider in Lacey. So this is really just out of a abundance of caution, where we're reappointing her under these guidelines compared to the old guidelines where she was just a member-at-large. In this case, she's a member specifically as someone who has professional experience in the human services area. So that's why I'm moving that we appoint Tiffany Walker to the Human Services Work Group.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
So her previous appointment hadn't expired?
Hadn't expired, but this is just, like, again, we're just being very, she moved out of the city, and she wasn't designated that specifically before, so this is...
A change of circumstance.
Change of circumstance, so we just wanna make sure we're crossing the, you know, dotted i's and crossing the t's here. Any other discussion?
Transparency.
Yeah. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries as well. I also just want to report that, you know, last Wednesday, I was the keynote speaker at a Leadership Thurston County Ceremony for their graduation, and it was quite an honor. I talked about leadership and my experience with leadership, you know, being on this council and being the mayor and my thoughts on it. And I felt like it went over pretty well as a, as a speech. And so, yeah, it was quite, quite an honor. With that, I'll turn it over to our next agenda, which is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and the City Council. The, I have a couple of items on the, my report tonight. The first item, I'd like to invite up Veronica Hand, our Equity and Inclusion Program Manager. I wanted to just kind of also, while she's walking up to the lectern, recognize her. This is, she's been with the city now for one year at the beginning of June, so I wanna congratulate her on her one-year anniversary. Also, starting this program as the Equity and Inclusion Program Manager, this is a new position for the City of Lacey. So there's a lot of learning and process of creating this new position. So I just wanna recognize Veronica and her efforts this year in coming on board, learning and, and learning about the organization and getting to know the organization, and then also starting to move some of these initiatives forward that's been on the council's priority. And our Equity and Inclusion Plan itemizes things we wanna move forward with the organization. So with that, she's gonna come up and give a, kind of an overview of some of the activities she's been working on this, this year, including the Thurston Forward DEI Summit that just occurred last May, and some other initiatives here with the City of Lacey. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here and also for the support to create this position that's been so important to me and that I have the honor to be working on for a year. I think we started at a slower pace than I anticipated, but it was totally necessary, and I see it now. You can hear me well, right? Okay. So the first thing I wanna talk about, it's something that we created in alignment with our DIB strategic plan. And it's an initiative that started with the Commission on Equity, and it was gonna be mostly a city initiative, but ended up being a Thurston County initiative. And it's a DIB summit. It took place in, at SPSC, the Lacey SPSC campus. We had a confirmation of, well, the confirmed attendees was 200. We really have an attendance of 130, more or less. But it was an event that was free. It was sometimes very challenging to plan and organize because we were like maybe 17, 18 people from different nonprofits and organizations, and also the City of Lacey Town Water and Olympia, of course, and Thurston County as well. So we had a speaker, Erin Jones, who is very well-recognized in, in the whole county and state, and in the country, actually. She was super, super nice with us, and she did it for free. She didn't charge us anything. In the end, we had enough money to give her a little stipend, but she, she was like, that was a big, big gift for our community. So this is her, and I just wanted to tell you about the objectives of our event. The number-one objective was to build a, a community, expand our networks, and see how are we all working on diversity work, especially in these times because we need to be united because we're stronger that way. The second one was to strengthen all these community connections, encourage collaboration, enhance more inclusive communication amongst all the organizers and the community who attended the event, uplift our voices as well, support the personal growth of our community, and promote mutual aid and care. That was also a very important goal for, for most of us and very needed. The top four, well, before we go to the takeaways, I wanna share that when we were organizing it, we were a little concerned that we were gonna get a lot of pushback from the community. We were afraid to announce it, like, the address publicly because we thought we could have protesters coming. So we requested the support of the police department, which in the end, they were there, but it wasn't necessary, thank God. But the event, it started with Erin as a keynote speaker, and then the next part of the agenda, the second part of the agenda or the second activity, was a youth panel. And we had three members of a youth, the City Council, Youth City, is that the proper name? Yes. And it was amazing. We never expected to have that. They were so open, so vulnerable, so humble, and they just set the tone for the whole day. And the environment, the energy of the event, the whole summit, the whole day, was very happy, very joyful, very positive. It was totally needed. And it was like really what our community and our county needed. And the fact that we were able to do it for free helped a lot. So the top four takeaways that we had, it was, like I was saying, overwhelmingly positive, super good feedback on the objectives, the speakers, the content for the day. The youth presenters, they were just a gem, very, very courageous young people from high school. That was their age, mostly, and it was their first time doing, like, doing like a public speaking at that level. So it was also dealing with such hard topics in such a way. It was, like I said, very admirable, and they set the bar very high for the rest of us attending for the workshops and the rest of the activities for the day. So they felt very inspired, connected, and, like we said, ready to take action. The other takeaway is that there was a very strong interest in collaborating together in the future, which we are already doing and implementing, and even in sponsoring of next event next year, like, the same event. And we actually already started organizing it. So it's gonna take place on April 8th at SPSC again. This is just to give you an idea of the setup. We were able to get the campus for $400, which was amazing, for two full days, the full campus. So that was a big, big contribution from SPSC. I want to acknowledge that because that was a big, big component in our success. The layout, the setup, the facility itself helped a lot in the success of the event. This is a very brief summary. We applied a survey, and in the summary, I'm not gonna read it all, but it was very reaffirming, and you have this in your kit. But, so the opportunity to reconnect, that was very well-valued, the follow-up of the attendees. One of our objectives was to meet new people, to extend your networks, and then follow up later on. So, and that is happening, so very, very positive. We had a sheet to ask for volunteers for next year. We had, like, super positive response on that as well. And also people who want to, like I said, sponsor. And all of the sponsors that we have for this year already confirmed their support for next year. So it was like super, super positive, especially when budgets are, there's a lot of budget cuts in this time. This is just a graph to show you how the percentages are, just to give you an idea of the people who answered the survey, how overwhelmingly they think that is, they believe in these, and they reaffirm the work, the, how much they would recommend the event, which is very, very positive. Also, how much they plan on following up with the attendees, interested in volunteer for next year. So it's what I just presented, presenting next year also speakers and organizational interest in sponsoring. This is just a little bit of the workshops. One of the results of a workshop that was led by Commissioner Cliff Brown was that the county and the cities are gonna start working together, especially their Commissions on Equity. They're gonna start working together to share goals and projects together. But this is just, oh, how do I go back? That was a very special moment. This is Carol Goss, one of our main organizers from the League of Women Voters, and Ling from APIC. They were having a super, super deep conversation that was very important for them. So we capture this very special moment. And, well, just, this is part of the youth panel, just to give you an idea. And this were, the three of us are main organizers. So this concludes the, what... So this concludes the, what we did with the summit. Like I said, we're going to do it again. It's also in an alley with our strategic plan. It's going to be at, at April 8th, S P S E C. Um, the, the other activity that I wanted to report super quickly, and we're not going to get into this because I know Rick is going to do it at a later meeting, but we completed also our first, uh, employee engagement survey. We had a very good response, 63% response. We did a lot of listening sessions with all the programs and teams. Rick recorded a video that we were able to place, well, advertise and forecast in our intranet site and also for the police department especially, because they couldn't attend a listening session. So we're already reported, we received the results, we created a dashboard with all the resort, all the results. We shared that with all of our staff. It's also in our intranet, and we're going to report on that also at a later meeting. Another priority that I had when I started working here, I was very worried about compliance with the Civil Rights Act. And I think the city was a little bit exposed because we didn't have a lot of language access tools and services. So in order for us to be in compliance, we created these posters, and I think we have shared them with you. But this is where the, our customers, when they come to our windows for service, they can point at the language that they speak, and then we can call an interpreter. We had these, but we're not, um, having it like in, in such a big format. And this, the big, big, big change is that we didn't have this, which is when they are not happy and they want to share a complaint or against our services or a staff member, they can file the complaint here. They have now the information how to file complaints. And then this is something we didn't have. This is also to show what their rights are. It's just called Know Your Rights. So it's also in 15 languages, I think. So the main paragraph is English, and then the same about their rights is in all these languages. Another thing that we worked on is we had a, a telephonic interpretation service available, but now we increased the number of languages. And we did some training with the staff so that they know how to use it, uh, more easily and faster. And something that I'm super proud of, that is very recent, we were able to get an interpretation app. So all the cellphones for all the staff have this app, and you just click on it, and you have access to 24/7 interpreters, anytime, any day. It includes A S L, which is very important, because we didn't, we were struggling a lot with A S L. So now you just click on the app and it, and you choo- choose the language, and you have the interpreter in seconds, including A S L. And this is all, in all of the cellphones for all the staff. Uh, we have trained all the customer service staff on this already, but we also acquired some iPads for each one of the customer service windows. So like utility billing, the police department, and it, they will be able to see with the iPad, a larger image for especially A S L, it's going to help a lot. So that's something also that helps us a lot with our language access goals and equity goals. Uh, the other thing is that we finished the draft for our language access plan. So we're just in the last, uh, review, and we're going to present it to the Commission on Equity next Monday, when we have our next meeting. So we're, very soon we'll have the language access plan. And I have also joined and have been attending, there's a community of practice for language access with all the state agencies and several cities from different, from the, all the country. So be attending those, and we've been working together, and now we're creating committees and, and to identify priorities and help each other, working together. That's all in terms of, of what we've done. What's next, we're going to organize on November 8th, uh, First Time Home Buyer Fair. We're doing it with the Thurston Association, with Thurston County Realtors Association. They're actually covering all the expenses. We're just going to support, and, and it's going to take pla, well, we're cos-sponsoring the venue. It's going to be at the community center. Last, I am, I don't know, how are we doing with time? Yeah? I have a video, I don't know if you want, well, I have two options that I want you to choose. We had attending at the summit, I don't know how interested you are on hearing more about it from another perspective, not just me. So some of our, uh, Commission of Equity members, they were there. I don't know if you would like to share a little bit about your experience, and also Councilwoman Cox was there. I don't know if you would like to share a little bit about your experience with the summit, or we have a video for the interpretation app that we can play to give you an idea how it works. I don't know what you prefer.
Well, I'd like to hear both. I, I hate to put you on the spot, but.
I asked them in advance if we could, well, a few minutes ago.
Yeah.
Except for you. Thank you.
I, I try, well, I will try my best not to belabor the point that this event would not have happened without Veronica's help and representing the city of Lacey and making this event successful. But what I could tell you is that, again, this event would not have happened without the efforts of Carol Goss and Denise Mello and Veronica Hand specifically. The organization event was kind of a labor of love, um, and I have characterized it as kind of just we slapped it together in a month, because there was a kind of a lot of like herding cats happening there for a while, as what happens when you get a lot of voices in the room that have a lot of great ideas, but it's kind of hard to get concise decisions. Um, and then we just kind of made it happen, and it was really this beautiful community event that happened. Also, I'd like to, uh, highlight our youth council member, Karen Powell. Um, I tapped her because we had discussions around what a youth panel could look like at our summit. And I'm like, well, we don't have any youth at this table. Perhaps we should just ask the youth what they think is the most appropriate. Um, and then Karen was able to utilize her contacts, um, on the council and in the community to really make that a stellar part of our program. And as Veronica so eloquently mentioned, it really set the tone for the rest of the day. It really was a wonderful event. I wish everybody here could have witnessed how great that was, honestly. Like, I can't do it justice talking about it. Importantly also, the key commitments that came out of this is that the major jurisdictions in Thurston County, including Thurston County, um, committed to working together on our D I efforts and coordinating our efforts, because we don't exist in evacuee, of course, um, and that is supposed to be happening in the month of September. Hopefully, we'll be getting more traction on that, um, with the next commission meeting for the Commission on Equity and/or the next one following, depending on how our agenda looks like and everything else. And then, as far as the future is concerned, we actually were a net positive event. Despite having little to no funding going into this, we just kind of went full throttle and hoped that commitments would follow through. We even had organizations that, we didn't ask for anything and just asked them to show up as a community resource, and then they committed money to the event after the fact, because they saw the value that it brought to our community. Um, and as Veronica also mentioned, the desire in our community and the pent-up demand was there. So needless to say, we're planning another one. And then we're also, I met yesterday with Carol Goss and Denise Mello. Also, um, we are planning on not only doing another event and having it bigger, better, more successful, but also like not becoming like a, a footnote and continuing our efforts until next year when we have another event. Um, and that looks like a variety of things, probably tabling out various events, maybe even like our, our, um, cultural event that happens in, well, it used to be March, now it's kind of like February-ish, and other community events that are kind of in alignment with our goals. And I'd also like to just point out one more quick thing. Erin Jones, who's the keynote speaker, mentioned, and I'll paraphrase her loosely here, that, you know, sometimes it may seem like, e- especially at our event, that we're kind of preaching to the choir, because it was everybody that was in this kind of work and that was passionate about it. But we are in a time where preaching to the choir and hearing that sermon again is kind of exactly what we need. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. Appreciate it. That's wonderful. And can you show the, the quick, uh, video too?
John, can you help us with that?
Welcome to Language Line Insight. Quickly connect to 9,000 professional interpreters on-demand, in video and audio. Insight eliminates language barriers to help grow your business and better serve your communities. It's fast, reliable, and secure. Insight is the fastest and easiest way to access trained interpreters in video for the top languages, including American Sign Language, as well as hundreds of languages in audio whenever and wherever you need them. Simply download the app, authenticate the first time, and you're ready to connect. Open the Insight app, scroll top languages or all languages, or search by language name or country. Tap the desired language and tap again to initiate a video or audio call. For video calls, position the screen to ensure the customer is centered. To help ensure a successful interpretation, make sure the volume is at the desired level, both on the device and with the in-app volume adjustment. This ensures you can easily understand the interpreter. Introduce yourself, then brief the interpreter about the call. This helps your interpreter understand your goal. Speak directly with the customer, not the interpreter. This is the fastest, most efficient way to communicate. Give the interpreter time to interpret. The interpreter may ask you or your client for clarification to ensure accuracy. Sentences may seem longer because some concepts have no equivalent in other languages. Speak in short sentences. Avoid jargon or complex terminology. This facilitates complete interpretation and accuracy. Check for understanding. Ask the interpreter to use the notepad feature to emphasize or confirm key information. The interpreter can type in English or the target language. When the call is completed, thank the interpreter and end the call by tapping the red phone icon. And don't forget to rate your call at the end. Five stars is the best. To view your call history, a schedule of video interpreter availability, or to place a test call, go to the Help and Settings icon. Technical assistance is available 24/7, 365 days a year. It's that easy to bridge language barriers and build relationships in any language. Thank you for using Language Line Insight.
I had one question. Yeah, go ahead.
So, so the, the laminated bill of rights thing that you have, uh, and, and an iPad is going to be located at each of the stations, um, at the front counter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's one for the city manager's office, one for Public Works, one at the shop, one at the park, one for the economic development, utility billing, and even the community center.
Oh, great. And so, well, they'll, they'll still have to like sort of point to which language they need? It's not like they can't just speak and it automatically go, yeah.
You come back to the lectern.
Sorry about that.
I can show you my phone if you want me to.
That's all right.
Yeah, they just click on the icon for the app, and it pops up the window where they have all the options of the languages. So you just select the language, double-tap on it, and then the interpreter will come on the video.
Great.
So it takes literally seconds.
Yeah.
Maybe A S L has more demand, so it may take a little longer. And there's just one step that they have to activate the service once, takes 30 seconds.
I was just curious, like, how, how do you know what language they're speaking? Because I don't know what language they're speaking.
Sorry. So they, that's why we have the Point At Your Language poster. So they can post, uh, like, point at the language that they need, or they have a smaller card, like, our staff has a smaller card, because sometimes it's on a window and the staff cannot go around the window. So they have a smaller card, they will show the card, and then they will point at the language, and then the staff person will just click on it. There's other options where they can call the company, and the company can talk to the person and identify the language.
Okay, great. Great, any other, any questions?
And the iPads that we got, we got them from the shop, so we didn't even have to buy new iPads. We're just buying them from the shop.
Excellent.
This isn't a question. I'm just really excited that we're expanding our language access services for Lacey in this way. This is something that I've wanted to see happen since before I ran for office, and it's like we're opening a door for all the community members that in the past would have had to work through somebody else potentially to communicate with us about what their needs are. And now they can speak directly to us and we can hear them. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Um, I am interested in, um, in seeing if maybe the, the council can, can get that app too, because I've been in circumstances where I haven't been able to communicate with a, a constituent before and wished I had, had access.
And that's come up in a couple of conversations I have with several council members. I was going to be checking with our I S department, see how we can push that out and then get the training set up so you know how to access it and operate it.
Great. Thank you so much. I mean, this is, I, it's hard to believe, it, it hasn't been 10 years yet. It was 10 years this fall where I, um, was first involved in National League of Cities and went to my first equity training, um, because at the time I was the chair of our Military's Community Council. And it was from, really from that point on, when I started to understand the significance of how many people in our communities, um, do not have access to our local government and how important equity was, uh, to our community. And that sort of started, I guess, is my sort of crusade to make sure, um, we could start looking at Lacey and have, uh, more equitable outcomes in our community. You know, and it started off with that, that ad hoc community, a committee that I was able to start, and, uh, you know, eventually led to the Commission on Equity. And now you can see the other jurisdictions are trying to catch up to, to Lacey. But it, this is exactly where the reasons why I felt I was so passionate about this, because there's so many people in our community who haven't felt like they belong because, um, our government hasn't been accessible to them. Or they have felt, uh, not accepted in, in, in other ways. So, um, I'm, I'm so proud of the progress we've made. I'm so proud of your hire and all the work that you're doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, if I may, I, I just really want to congratulate you, Veronica. I, I, I heard you express, you know, early on frustration with things not moving so fast. But as our city manager is fond of saying, sometimes you have to start slow to move fast. And when you think about really how much has been accomplished in a year, uh, it's amazing. And so, thank you for your leadership on this, and I really look forward to the next D I B summit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, if I can add on just one thing about the interpretation app, that has always been an important service and responsibility we've had. It's always been a challenge, because, um, you know, you always either have to find a, a fellow employee that could speak a certain language or rely on the, uh, customer or the, the public's, uh, family members or other, or if you have public hearings, trying to get enough events noticed so you can coordinate and try to find him, either bring in an interpreter or figure out a way to bridge that gap. And it really is quite expensive, and it's amazing with technology and this app to have that, um, on-demand, and it's relatively inexpensive, too. It, it's just, uh, the accessibility on all the employees' phones, so that everybody has the opportunity to have that as a resource and interact with the community. So thank you, Veronica, for all you've been doing. It's been a good year of, 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 uh, progress. And of course, there's many more things to come that, uh, she'll be working on in terms of, uh, advancing some of our strategic plan initiatives. So, thank you, Veronica.
Great.
I wasn't that frustrated. I just didn't want you to regret hiring me.
I have a, a, a couple more items on, on the, uh, my report tonight related to, uh, public works bids. Our first one is, um, the new production well on Marvin Road. And I want to invite out Jason Cassani, who will provide an overview of the project and the bidding process and, uh, request, uh, council to accept those bids.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Staff recommends, uh, award of Lacey contract number P W 2022-27 to low bidder Holt Services, Inc., from Milton, Washington, in the amount of $1,706,136.67. The engineer's estimate came in at, uh, $1,977,781.30. Due to the complexity and, uh, this work being highly specialized, we really only got two bidders on this project. The project is anticipated to start in August of 2025 with 145 working days allotted. We expect the project to be completed by, uh, March of 2026. I'm happy to see that, uh, Holt came in with such a competitive bid. Like I said, two bidders. The next, uh, the next nearest bid came in just under the engineer's estimate as well, but it was about $230,000 more. So we're excited to see this, uh, project move forward. So this is the Marvin Road Production Well. It's one of two production wells that are, uh, planned to be constructed in the near future as part of the city's, uh, undeveloped impending water rights to meet, uh, current and future demands of growing population. This project includes drilling, uh, and installing a 16-inch production well at the. This project includes drilling and installing a 16-inch production well at the city-owned property northwest of the intersection of Marvin Road and 41st Avenue. This, sorry, the water right for this actual production well is supposed to be 1,500 acre feet annually with up to 1,000 gallons per minute. You know, I'm sorry.
Question. Go ahead and go through it, and then we'll get the questions at the end.
Yeah, I apologize.
That's right.
So anyways, like I said, city purchased property, the northwest corner of the intersection of Marvin Road and 41st Avenue. So this project is nearing the completion phase, where we're getting ready to drill the production well, but there's still a few more steps to actually get the water into our system right now. I mean, originally, we identified the need as part of the comp plan a number of years ago, secured the water rights, and drilled the test well, so we actually know what we're actually going to expect to get. We drilled, I think it was an eight-inch test well, and explored these zones down. So this is probably our deepest well, at about 750 feet deep. So, once we secured the property and went through design, got the specs and everything all ready to bid, now we're ready to drill the well. After this well gets drilled, we're going to be having to deal, once we actually get the well drilled into the ground, now we can actually figure out what we're really going to see as far as water and testing the water quality. But we have anticipated that this water's going to go to the treatment facility, which is right at the other end of the corner, sorry, I maybe going the wrong way. So kitty corner from the project site, the Hawks Prairie Treatment Facility, we're also got another project that's actually going to just study the capacity of that treatment facility, once we understand exactly what we're dealing with, with the constituents inside the water, and move forward. But we plan that this all should go according to plan, that that treatment facility will either be able to deal with this extra capacity or be upgraded to, to deal with the new water. And as far as, I thought it was kind of interesting to add a couple of slides in here that kind of shows a bit of the anatomy of a well. This picture kind of shows, because it's always hard for me to understand exactly what an aquifer looks like, and this is one of the pictures from a pretty well-known book that aids in study for hydrogeology. It kind of shows the screened interval portion of the well inside the aquifer. So if you can see the picture on the right, that's going to be, that is the design of our well. This, like I said, this one's going 750 feet deep. The upper portion of the well, we've designed this to be drilled with two different types of drilling rigs. I have that slide that kind of shows there's two different kinds of drilling rigs. The upper portion, zero to 460 feet deep, is going to be done with a rotary drill drilling rig, which allows us to kind of make a lot of progress in a shorter amount of time. But once we get into the production, production zone, below 460 feet, we have to kind of really take our time and just, the hydrogeologist that's actually on board to oversee the drilling will analyze the samples and make sure that we're actually putting the screened portion of the production well in the correct zones based on the samples that we actually get from the, as we're drilling. So that lower portion, again, is going to be done with the cable to, the cable to a drilling rig. So, like I said, Holt is the low bidder, and they've done plenty of well, drilling wells for us, and well rehab, and all that kind of stuff, so we're excited to see this project move forward.
I would make a motion to award Lacey contract number PW 2022-27 to low bidder Holt Services, Incorporated, from Milton, Washington, in the amount of $1,706,136.67.
Second. Been moving seconded, discussion?
Yeah, I have something. So, we saved 234,000, and the proposed site is actually, isn't that property of North Thurston High School, or North Thurston Public Schools?
I believe it's adjacent to North Thurston Public Schools.
Yeah, we, it was originally part of the ownership of North Thurston Public Schools, and we bought the corner piece for this project.
Okay, perfect, yep. All right, thank you.
So, just a comment, 750 is way down.
It's pretty deep.
Yeah, that's pretty deep for a well. Have we gone that far before?
No.
I don't think we've gone that far. I think the deepest well we have right now is about 600 feet, so really similar, but this and the second well that's coming up, which will be the Meridian Campus Well, we're actually advertising that one right now. We're hoping to drill them kind of both back-to-back, they're almost identical wells, but not too far from the most recent well that we drilled.
And so, obviously, we, hopefully we did some well testing around there, and this is, seems like the best, was the best pot to put, I mean, that just seems so, the problem that seems like we've had when we have these deep wells is that there can be a lot of minerals and stuff, and so it's even more expensive to treat them, right, because they, because they can get stuff in it, and you have to, and it's so far down that the energy to pump water that far up and over makes it very, very expensive. I mean, I imagine we did our homework, but it seems like not a great location.
Well, I know we have done our homework, and I'm sort of new to the well drilling, but I think in this area, I think we are not so much concerned with some of the constituents that we have in some of the other locations. I think we're okay here with the depth, but I think there is some consideration that we are continuing doing some study, and I think it's more like saltwater intrusion.
Yeah, because you think you're getting that close, and the bay is not really that far away from here, that's another consideration.
But I think with these two wells, we're going to be able to really, especially with them going back-to-back, really understand kind of some of these impacts. I mean, I think there's enough water with our water right and everything, but we will be continually monitoring it to see exactly if the seawater's coming in as we're drawing the water out of the ground and that sort of thing. So we definitely have our hydrogeologists working closely with us on that.
And you're projecting 1,000 per minute?
Up to 1,000 gallons per minute.
Good.
I think between the two wells, I think we're looking at 1,800 gallons per minute, which is roughly about, between the two wells, I think it will come close to our biggest production well that we currently have online.
I'm really glad to see us investing in more wells and deeper wells. I have a question for you, this is a pretty good-sized piece of property, when I see the outline here, and it's very heavily forested. Are you all going to be able to preserve a good chunk of the trees there, I hope?
I would imagine so. And some of the consideration, I think there is really making sure that we have enough space around our well, because we're always worried about just making sure that any infiltration that's going into the ground isn't contaminating, contaminating our aquifer, so, but yeah, for the most part, I, I mean, all that design is to come on a future project, but I don't think we're going to tear down more trees than we have to.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, it's been moved and seconded to award this Lacey contract to the low bidder, to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion, the House of Security.
Thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right, have another couple of bid awards, I'd like to invite Nate Ensley up, our utilities engineer. I'm going to introduce these next two bid awards at the same time, since Nate will be speaking to both of them, but there are two separate projects and two separate actions and presentations. But the first one will be the Lakeview Meadows Utility Improvements, and the second one will be the replacement of our lift station number three. So, take it up from there, Nate.
Hey, Rick. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members. My name is Nate Ensley, Animal Water and Wastewater Utility Engineer with Public Works Staff recommends award of the Lakeview Meadows Utility Improvements Project, Lacey Contract Number PW 2023-22, to low bidder ANC Facility Services from Lacey, Washington, in the amount of $421,396.59. This project was advertised for roughly three weeks, and bids were open May 29th, 2025. Twelve bids were received, ranging from $413,000 to $571,000, with an engineer's estimate Wastewater operations staff identified a sewer main which is compromised due to tree root growth. The video here on the screen shows our inspection camera crawling down the pipe when the pipe loses its circular shape at the constricted location. If left unaddressed, we carry the risk of a sewer main blockage, sewer main blockage. Accordingly, this project will replace this sewer main. The map on the right here shows the project's location. The work area is on 32nd Lane Southeast, west of College, and east of Chambers Lake. The image on the left shows a closer-up project map. In addition to replacing 300-plus feet of sewer main, Public Works will also take this opportunity to build in a planned water main connection for better looping and resiliency within our water system. ANC Facility Services will have 40 working days to complete this work, and we anticipate construction starting around August. I wanted to give a quick thanks to our attorney, Dave Schneider, here, for his work in working with these private property owners and securing multiple temporary and permanent easements to support this work. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Can I give a motion, please?
I move that we award Lacey Contract Number PW 2023-22 to low bidder ANC Facility Services from Lacey, Washington, in the amount of $421,396.59.
Second. It's been moving seconded, discussion? Obviously, the main question here is, is why was the low bidder rejected?
The low bidder was rejected to some issues with their paperwork, specifically the bond form was not legitimate and acceptable for the city.
Okay. Councilor Stebbin?
Competitive bid process saved us 117,000 on this one.
Yeah.
Good job. Twelve bidders, great.
Anyone else?
Did it show where the, where the pipe collapsed?
It's not collapsed currently, we just fear that it could collapse one day. As far as the location along the pipe, if we go back to my initial slides, or, I don't know if this is showing the PowerPoint anymore, but it was next to one of the large trees where this, there we go. This video might have footage about six feet away from the manhole that they were cammering this from, so if we go back to the site plan, it probably would have been, it was either at this location around here, or closer to the east over here, where this constriction is happening. But you might see that there's a handful of trees in that area, and so all of these trees pose that same risk for that sewer pipe over the years.
Yeah. And so, obviously, the construction of new sewer pipe, are they, you know, comparable to these roots, or if we replace this, is there fear of the roots causing problems in the future?
There is, that's why this project does include removal of any trees that would compromise that pipe in the future. This is in a legacy 20-foot-wide utility easement that the city has had since this pipe was originally built. The trees that are next to it that are compromising it are opportunistic trees that were not planted on purpose, and so we intend to put back some low-grow seed mix in place of the construction area after the trees are gone, in hopes that we don't see trees risk our pipelines in the future.
How old is, how old is the existing pipe?
Ooh.
Other than you?
Off the top of my head, I would say at least 30 to 40 years old, but don't quote me on that.
Okay. Hopefully, some things have changed in pipe technology since then, too. Any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to award this Lacey contract for the Lakeview Meadows Utility Improvements to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion, the House of Security. Next one?
Lift station three replacement. Staff recommends award of Lacey Contract Number PW 2021-06 to low bidder Prospect Construction, Inc., from Puyallup, Washington, in the amount of $3,689,926.24. This project was advertised for roughly four weeks, and bids were open May 20th, 2025. Eight bids were received for this project, ranging from $3.6 million to $5.1 million. We have an engineer's estimate of $3.7 million on this project. This existing lift station number three was originally constructed in 1970, making it the oldest station in our system. This is also the city's third-largest flowing lift station, with a customer connection count of over 1,800 taps. Next slide here. You may recall, in the last five years or so, the city purchased a parcel next to this lift station on Golf Club Road and 26th, and demolished an existing house there. The site plan on the left here shows that this purchase and demolition made way for the city to relocate the station away from the roadway shoulder and onto this new parcel. This allows for a safer environment for both our operations staff and the public. Some elements of this new station layout include a new well with submersible sewage pumps, new valve vaults, a new electrical building, a generator, and other site improvements. If you look at the map on the right, you'll see that this project also includes installation of a 700-foot-long stormwater conveyance system, which seeks to address surface ponding that we've seen on nearby residential parcels, and it will convey that water away from those residential parcels in a more effective manner. On the map on the right here, there is a small note for some water improvements here. That's for a short stretch of water main pipe that we're doing while we're tearing up the road here to lay the foundation for a future project that'll build a new pipeline kind of eastbound down 26th Ave, southeast on the map here. Prospect Construction is qualified and capable of performing this work. The project is expected to start around August, just like the last one, with 260 working days allotted to complete the work. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Can I give a motion, please?
Move to award Lacey Contract Number PW 2021-06 to low bidder Prospect Construction, Inc., from Puyallup, Washington, in the amount of $3,689,926.24.
Second. It's been moving seconded, discussion? Obviously, the low bidder issue on this one?
So, similar low bidder, but this one, on this one, we rejected the apparent low bidder for a different reason. So this project, due to its just technical complexity and nature, we wrote in a supplemental qualification criteria requirement in our contract. The city-
I'll explain later.
You're on, hey, Mike.
Listen.
Can you mute yourself, please?
Yeah, sorry.
Where was I? So, the city wrote in some qualification criteria, just to make sure that the contractor that pursues this job and we give it to is somebody who knows what they're getting themselves into. This has some technical, or some complex construction methods such as de-watering with a 20-foot-deep shoring while they dig our new sewage wet well in the ground, and so that's a little bit more technical in nature, and so we wanted to make sure that the contractor knew what they're getting themselves into. And so the low contractor unfortunately did not clear that bar during our review process, and so we had to reject them and move on to apparent low bidder number two, which is Prospect Construction.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, that's always a difficult thing, right? You know, when they say, like, did they say they were qualified, and they're like- do they say they were qualified? And they're like, no, you're not qualified. Was it he said, she said the thing, or?
Yeah, so the language in the contract says the bidder shall have done X amount of projects similar to this in the past. And the bidder had employees who had done projects like that, but the bidder themselves as a company, as a business, had not done projects like this. So based off that, we honored a precedent that was set recently on a different project, and unfortunately rejected them.
Okay.
Looked like Councilmember Stedman had a comment.
Mike, you want, you have a comment?
Yeah, sorry about the muted thing that got company. I just wanted the competitive bid process saved us $58,000 on this one.
Just a real quick comment. So it mentioned 261 working days, I think is what it said. Will there be any road closures as, because of those working days?
Yeah, I would believe, I would anticipate some roadway closures as we dig the pipeline system of 700 feet of stormwater main down the streets around to the Chambers Lake area. As usual, we'll try to minimize those road closures and their durations. We'll also be reaching out to the local communities to give them a heads up that this is coming their way.
Anything else? Well, sure, nice to get a couple of these, these old Public Works, you know, off the books here. This is going all the way back to 2021. So it's one of the older contracts I've seen in a while. So obviously, I guess probably that speaks to how complex this was to, as well.
Yeah, this one had some complexities. We also wrestled with some staff turnover along the way. I want to give a shout out to our wastewater operations staff for keeping the old lift station limping along while we get this design done, and they are excited to see a new shiny lift station on that corner.
I'm sure. I mean, this has been a long time coming. I know we've been talking about this for a bit, so.
We've done several lift stations in the last 24 months. I can count at least four or five.
Yeah. Well, these old lift stations, they eventually fail, and the technology's changed so much from some of the old things that we've done, you know, this old system, trying to get this old, that's one of the more difficult things about when you look at our system. We didn't sort of grow naturally from a city from like inside out, you know? We had all these complex, different little systems that we had to pull together to have one big system, and it just, it's been difficult for us to do that over the years because these were all on, you know, these were all on their own wells at one point, you know? And so, yeah.
They're all siloed.
So, yeah, they're all siloed. Now we have to make it one big system. Anyway, anyone else? Then it's been moved in second to have this Lacey contract for the lift station three replacement project go to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 One opposed? That motion the House carries. Thank you.
That concludes my report tonight. Thank you, Council and Mayor.
Great. Well, then, I'll go on to council reports, and I am up first. And my first report is going to be on the transportation policy board, which met June 11th last Wednesday. And there was two sort of items that took up the majority of our meeting. The first one was our discussion around the high-capacity transportation policy statement. And you'd think that would be just a pretty easy, straightforward conversation, but we've been actually talking at the transportation policy board for a little bit. When we're looking at high-capacity transportation, the first thing that we are always asked is when's the train going to come all the way down here to Thurston County? I mean, this is the, you know, I've been the chair of the TPB for, well, almost 15 years now, and this is something that we're always asked. And we've done lots of studies over the years, and it hasn't been feasible for a lot of reasons. One of the biggest reasons is that the route that you would have to take on the existing lines really takes you all the way out to, you know, South Lacey, you know, East Olympia, that area. And there's, in order to get into any sort of population center, there's just no direct way. And the amount of time that would take doesn't make it really feasible because it'd be so expensive to do. Well, we know that we're in the process of looking at the I-5 corridor from, you know, Mounts Road all the way through Tom Water. And one of the discussion items that, you know, we looked at on this corridor is when we replace the Niskewali Bridges, which we're going to have to do. Those bridges are going to be replaced at an elevation that would now make it feasible for that rail line to come from DuPont and travel along I-5 straight up to, you know, up, all the way up to the hill there, and has the possibility of continuing down to downtown Olympia if you follow the I-5. This in particular is somewhat attractive, especially for the Quamuth Village area, who we're, you know, hoping to see a lot of visitors and a lot of people who could use transit to get there, including this. However, we don't have a preferred rail line on any map anywhere. And so this would need to take some studying to actually show that this would be feasible for this to be the preferred rail line, if there was a rail line. Not talking about money or anything else in the past, you know, about that. But there's been discussion saying, hey, shouldn't we put this, at least trying to say this is what we think should be the preferred rail line, or we should study to see if we can make this the preferred rail line on our policy statement? Because if you never put it on the map, it just will never exist. And so sort of the importance of having, planning things out and having things on a map, right, is to remind you of what can be, or especially allows people to plan for it, too. And so we had quite a bit of discussion. It's only supposed to have been a 10-minute presentation, 10-minute discussion, and it ended up going for quite a long time. And we basically did end up with some language, basically looking at from 2030 to 2045 establishing a preferred route for rail to connect to DuPont. But that took a lot of discussion. I wasn't expecting it. The other part, the next agenda item was our RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, public comment and recommendations. And this is where the discussion came up, and we had some public comments about the Log Cabin Road extension. And again, I have to give some historic background on this. This is the third time this issue has come up at the transportation policy board than the full TRPC board. And so there is a lot of history behind this decision and this topic in particular. And you really have to go back almost 40 years to talk about, you know, 30, 30-something years for sure, to talk about how we got here. And a study was done, you know, back in the 90s when we knew we needed another arterial besides Yelm Highway and, you know, the old 101, you know, Pacific Avenue, Martin Way corridor. And so the jurisdictions, you know, got together and looked at a map and said, okay, where will the preferred, this new preferred corridor be? And Lacey, Olympia, Thurston County, Tom Water, we all been mapped it out. And so for all those years, we've been planning on that corridor to be completed. And, you know, Lacey's collected funds and the county's collected funds and the Olympia's collected funds and Tom Water's collected funds, all to support this corridor. Lacey, we built our, of this corridor, the Mullen Road extension. And we built it even though we had major pushback from our community at the time who didn't want it. But this was a regional project of significance, and it was agreed upon, so we built it. Tom Water on their end has done some work, and all the planning and scoping has gone around making sure this corridor, this was completed because it has a huge impact on Yelm Highway and the other, other streets. And so when Olympia then got to a point where they went to design, the, once it got to that point, the, a very passionate group of people who want to protect the LBA woods were not happy with the current design. They didn't want the connection to happen at all. So the city of Olympia, the first thing they did is they went back and completely redesigned the corridor, connecting through. And so instead of it looking like Mullen Road, they went out and analyzed the trees that were there. There were some bigger, some other bigger trees, and they decided to come up with a design that had a single road that sort of meandered and protected as many trees as possible. And then they had a separate pedestrian and bicycle path that did the same on both directions. And that was sort of the compromise to try to protect as many trees as possible and, but still allow the corridor to happen. So that was progressing along, and we, there was a bunch of pushback from neighbors in that area. And there was a decision that was made back in 2021 that that what the city of Olympia agreed to do at the time was to not guarantee that corridor was going to happen, but to do a study to say if we don't do this corridor, what, how do we mitigate the traffic and everyone's plans that's happened along the way? Because this has been years and years and years in the works. And so we all agreed, Olympia, Tom Water, Thursday, we all agreed, okay, Olympia, go ahead and do your study. That study is gonna, they say is gonna happen around 2030. And so that's where, that's what we've been waiting for. That was the agreed-upon next steps. Well, but every, you know, five years or so, we update on the regional transportation plan. And again, we're at this situation where there's the same group of very passionate people, and I understand where they're coming from, have sort of, you know, come to City Olympia and say, we, you know, we don't want this corridor happen, we don't want this corridor to happen. They also went to the full board and stated their case. And I have to say that, you know, this, the full board didn't make a recommendation because that would have been out of the normal process, right? Because everything goes, the public comments happen, it goes to the transportation policy board. Transportation policy board is just very similar to our planning commission, right? So everything goes through the planning commission before a recommendation happens. So to get in front of that process is just out of, would be out of order. So it did come to this, you know, to transportation policy board, and we sort of had to give the historic background of how we got here and what we just agreed upon, you know, five years ago, that we were going to agree to have Olympia do this study to see what the actual impacts would be. And then, and I have to give credit to the TRPC staff. Between last, you know, the Friday prior when the full board met and the Wednesday, last Wednesday, when the transportation policy board met, they did some quick work of modeling of what would their model show would happen if this planned corridor didn't happen. And you have, surprise, surprise, you see streets failing on Yelm Highway and others. And so that being said, there's not only this issue where we talked about this corridor that's been discussed for a long time, but also the other issue that we've talked about, about the equity part of this RTP plan that's been discussed. And as I brought up at our policy board meeting, we have never, the policy board has never overruled a local jurisdiction or regional jurisdictions priorities or has ever prevented a member of, you know, of a jurisdiction to not receive federal funding before because of a policy of the regional transportation, you know, or of the RTP, you know, the full board. And so the question I posed at the time when we were discussing this is, has all the other jurisdictions talked to their full boards and talked about this issue in particular? Has Thurston County, you know, Olympia, Tom Water, has, they all had consensus about this decision? And no one has, no one had given me the, you know, the yes or no on that because obviously, this has very big implications, possible implications for funding in the future. And so, long story short, what happened is we tabled the, our recommendation for the regional transportation plan until I could get guidance and the other jurisdictions could get guidance from their full councils on what to do in this circumstance. Because these are, you know, two really big issues that have regional significance, and it's important that the people who are making the decisions are making their decisions based on their entire jurisdictions and not their, just their personal opinions. And so that's what happened. We tabled this until our next meeting with a request out to all the other jurisdictions that they, that their member of the transportation policy board brief their prospective jurisdictions and get feedback before we can make a decision going forward on what we do with this regional transportation plan. So I spoke to our city manager about this. He, I asked him to go and look at the transportation policy board's conversation, and he has agreed to put it on our work session for July 8th.
For July 8th.
And then transportation policy board will meet on July 9th. And so I'll be better informed at that point on what our full, what Lacey's perspective is on those, on those two issues.
Did we ILA that with those guys?
For the, sorry, ILA for the corridor.
No, I don't believe it's all tied to the regional planning effort and regional coordination and the regional transportation planning program.
So needless to say, those two issues took up more, we actually did, we supposed to adjourn at 10 o'clock. We didn't adjourn close to 10:30. Obviously, a lot to talk about there. But with that, that's my report. Next up, Deputy Mayor.
Just a couple of reports. Jazzcom met on June 9th.
Jazzcom met on June 9th, um, here in these chambers and, uh, intake for, uh, April, May, um, through Jazzcom is up over 32% uh, for, for dogs. Uh, intake by jurisdiction, uh, is Thurston County is, uh, 66% of the intake, uh, Olympia 16%, and Lacy's 14% and Tom Water is, is the remainder of that number. Let's see, field calls obviously are, are up as well, uh, and they're up across the board. Field calls by jurisdiction are 46% for, um, Thurston County, uh, 25% for Olympia, uh, Lacy's at 20% and Tom Water's at 9%. Um, we are, uh, experiencing or seeing more volunteers, uh, this season. And, uh, in the last, uh, year, we had, we'll get to the volunteer part a little bit later. There are a couple of new programs, our outreach is, is reaching more people, uh, and outreach actually has, uh, an education component with it now. There, there's a program called the Champion Dog Program where, uh, volunteers, um, can, can work with the animals, um, and, uh, the, the volunteer number is up from three to eight now. Uh, so, so joint animal services is, is really getting more connected in the community, doing more and really getting a lot more people in the door. Uh, animal, uh, animal cruelty volunteers, numbers are up as well, uh, from six to nine. In 2024, there were, uh, 24 outreach events which spawned a whole bunch of cool different things. Let's see, including Tom Water Dog Day, um, there's a festival, several festivals where we had booth, the All American Jubilee, uh, which is kind of a Fourth of July type event. Animal Allies Club, uh, education event, uh, being held at the Lacy Library, um, and also at the Yum Library. So this is kind of a, a kids event, um, where, you know, kids are, uh, taught how to deal with and, and care for, for the animals. Uh, so volunteers in 2024 were, uh, at 140 volunteers, uh, which is, uh, was a little over, uh, 5,600 hours, almost 5,700 hours worth of volunteers. So that's a little over a quarter, almost a quarter million dollars, uh, worth of full time employment, um, opportunity there. And then so far in 2025, um, we're at 127 volunteers, uh, for a total of $113,000 worth of full-time employment dollars, um, that is just coming in just strictly based on community support. Uh, there is a kennel enrichment program. Um, we, we did discuss, uh, low-cost spade neuter, uh, because that's kind of an issue. There's, there's about 20 low-cost, uh, clinics in Western Washington, but there is none in Thurston County, uh, not one, not yet. And so, um, we did, uh, discuss, you know, how in the future we might be able to, to create a program or create, maybe find some space and, and see if there's a way that we could, you know, at least get one clinic in Thurston County. Uh, that's, that's going to be more of a regional push and, and more, um, of a regionally, how are we going to fund it? It's going to probably be private dollars for that. But one of the reasons why we had such a robust discussion about is because almost 3,000 people took their animal out of county to do a spade neuter in a low-cost, low-cost clinic in, uh, another county. And so, um, we have, you know, people, and, and when you do that, you know, you, maybe you have to take the day off, maybe you have to, you, in some cases, you can't, it's not just you stop there for an hour and, and go home, it's, it's a, a double trip. So, so, um, there might be a way that we can find a way to help local residents not have to do that. Uh, there's, um, some vet works, workspace, workspace shortage. Uh, so there, there's a scoring model, um, in, in the animal community where, um, you are rated on how quickly your residents can get access to veterinary care. Uh, and the scoring model is, um, zero to 100, and we are 44. So we, we have some ways to go. Uh, and some of the other rural communities on the other side of the state are even, even worse than that. Let's see, the Thurston County Humane Society voucher program is currently on hold, uh, and a lot of people depend on those vouchers. Um, and, and I'll let you guys know when it, when it's back up. Uh, we also considered or discussed Mash Clinic, which is like kind of a mobile, um, animal rescue, or I won't say rescue, but, um, clinic that, that we can't afford either. But maybe one day. Uh, I'll see in the director's report, um, there are four animal protection bills that passed, uh, the senate, I mean, um, legislation this year. Uh, that's House Bill 1149, uh, which is deals with animal cruelty, House Bill 1201, uh, House Bill 1046, and Senate Bill 5065. I'd be happy to brief you guys on those if you guys want to know exactly what's in there, but, uh, animal cruelty is, is kind of a big thing and the definition of that, uh, sheltering for animals is, is another issue. Um, if you, um, are being sheltered, should your animal be able to come with you? Uh, the answer is yes, resounding on that. Um, another one is if you see an animal trapped in a car, there was a time where you could, if you broke that car window to, to help save that animal, you could be charged and you no longer can be charged, uh, and things like that. So, uh, let's see, we did get approved for 1 million of the 2 million that we asked for, for, uh, joint animal service design, uh, for a new building. Uh, so, so that was kind of exciting. Um, and a Jazzcom employee is now a member of the Washington, uh, Animal Fighting Task Force. So we have representation, uh, there at the task force, we have representation nationally because Sarah is on the national committee, and then we also have representation on state level, uh, as well. Uh, we did have a budget amendment because just like a lot of others, our LNI score has changed, uh, we were below 100, now we are over 100. Uh, our budget amendment was a little over $12,000, actually it was a little short of $13,000, which is going to be a little bit over a thousand dollars a month for us. And so I'll, I'll bring more information on that. I, I still am trying to wrap my head around the LNI scoring, uh, and how that works, just like the mayor was saying earlier tonight, uh, it is not exactly an easy formula, uh, but once I get it down, you will know about it too. Uh, and then in May, the fee waived, um, adoption event produced 36 adoptions, which is really great because that was a, a $25,000 grant that we got last year. Uh, we were able to put it in action this year and, and do some free adoption. So, um, a lot of happy, happy folks with, with new pets in the community. That's the end of my Jazzcom report. Uh, moving on to the Thurston County.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Does Jazzcom require specific training for its volunteers?
They do.
Okay, we have like
Absolutely.
folks that are going to high school who have required service hours. I got a question somewhere along the way this week about places that accept volunteers in Lacy, and so Jazzcom sprang to mind, but there's a training that people have to take before they can volunteer.
There is, and the training's been, um, made a little more accessible because it's a, it's a shorter video now and then that gets you right back, right into the clinic to do some of the in-person training. Uh, but the video will, will kind of give you enough information and make sure that you still want to continue on. The EDC met on May 28th, um, had our board of directors meeting. Uh, and this time we were able to have, uh, it at the Ag Park that I've been telling you guys for about, for about two years now. Uh, the Ag Park is fully completed, at least two buildings are completed and, um, are, um, have been rented out. Uh, EDC does have a small office in there for, uh, the STEAD program. Uh, it was, it was kind of a all hands on deck kind of event and it was pretty star-studded. A lot of our, our legislators showed up and, uh, council, I mean, Congresswoman Strickland will be there tomorrow, I'm going to try to make it out there. So, so presenting, uh, at that meeting, we had, um, uh, another energy power company presentation who are going to, um, create another, I guess, what I like to call capacitor, but in this case they're solar powered capacitors. And so, um, Kenton Martin was, is the senior manager, uh, project manager. And he kind of gave an overview of the company's proposal for a development of a, two solar panel projects in Thurston County, one in Yelm and one over here at the Thurston County Waste. I guess it's the, where the dog park is? Yeah. And so, um, these projects, um, they're going to kind of provide distribution scale power from solar generation, uh, to add to PSE's grid. Um, the, the, uh, one of the projects over here would provide, uh, three, three, uh, megawatts, um, located at the Waste Recovery Center in Lacy. Um, they're going to be leasing from Thurston County. And the second would be located at Yelm Prairie, uh, four miles southeast of Yelm. And so, uh, those projects, we hope that they get off the ground, but in, in light of like all these, um, power projects that we, that we keep seeing coming to, to the EDC, um, it was suggested that we have Puget Sound Energy come and just kind of give us the, the 30,000 square, uh, foot view of, of our power grid and, and where in the future, um, future projects might be, might be happening. Uh, the Economic Vitality Index is, it will be out soon. Uh, at, at the beginning of year, kind of the economic vitality, uh, confidence was a little bit low, it's starting to pick up a little bit now, uh, since, you know, tariff talk has kind of calmed down a little bit. Let's see. the, the tenants that current, so, so at the, at the Ag Park, there are several lots still available. Uh, so, so it's, it's a whole lot bigger than just the two, um, buildings that are there. And so, so now, um, some of those lots are either being subdivided or, or are on the market for, for people to, to come in and put, put their businesses there. A couple of businesses have reached out to me and said, hey, we would like to, to consider, you know, um, having space at the Ag Park, very exciting times, uh, for the Ag Park because Coville Farms, uh, will, will have space there for a processing plant, uh, but there are other companies who are, you know, growing hydroponic fruit and vegetables, um, turning waste into fertilizer, uh, you know, really, really, um, kind of organic, um, products that, that, that they want to put in these spaces. So, um, those, those lots are available, uh, to those companies if, if they can lock up the land, um, and then the EDC will help them, you know, potentially get funding, but, um, we, we really are trying to, to fill those spaces. And, uh, if you, if you go, if you get a chance to go down there, it looks fantastic. And there's actually kind of a huge patio where you can, you know, do all kinds of cool things. The South Thurston Economic Development Initiative, STEAD, uh, has been working with, um, a lot of the community in that area. Uh, they helped the town of Bicota, uh, and Tenino, um, and Rainier, uh, secure $39,500 each, uh, in grants, uh, secured $18,000, um, from a USDA grant. Uh, they assisted Thurston County lodging tax, uh, applications for Grand Mound, Tenino, uh, Rainier, um, applied for and received $5,000 from the Chehalis Tribe, uh, and advocate for, for several other businesses. There was actually a business that was going to close down because, um, they were having a hard time meeting some of the Thurston County Health, uh, codes, but, um, STEAD was able to step in there and help them kind of navigate that, that arena, uh, so that they could stay open. Uh, they coordinated Organ Trail Days to increase the attendance from 11,500 to 13,300 and several other events in the area. And then, uh, the next meeting, uh, is going to be next Wednesday, the 25th, uh, and that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenstein.
Two very quick reports tonight. Thurston 911 met on June 4th. Couple of things on there, we, uh, took some time to recognize our employee of the year, Lisa Goss. She, uh, got great, just incredible commentary from some of her coworkers about the work that she does in serving the public and in serving our police and fire agencies. We had our, we are, the third training academy is currently underway with five people in that training class, should be fully staffed by the end of the year, uh, which has been a long time goal and is, and something we've not been able to get to for several years now, but it looks promising that we'll finally be fully staffed. And, um, formed two new subcommittees at this last meeting. We have a budget subcommittee and a labor negotiation subcommittee. I am sitting on both of those. And that is my report on TCOM. Also had on the same day, the 4th, the opioid abatement council meeting, um, making some slow progress there. Uh, still, the ILA is still not complete, so we're still kind of waiting for that before we can make any really big progress. But we did start looking at several of the other funding sources that the different nonprofits and things are getting money from in order to do work in the opioid abatement area. And a lot of those funding sources, uh, it looks like will be at least marginally cut in the state budget this year. So a lot of those are going to be reduced. So a lot of those current programs are going to be looking for funding. So we're anticipating a lot of them coming to us looking for some of that funding. Um, and we started looking at the myriad of things that you're allowed to use the money for and started to narrow down to those things that we think are, we want to focus on and those things that the community has said they want us focusing on. So more, more to come on that, um, and that is my report.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Stedman doesn't, then have a report, uh, Councilmember Cox.
I have two reports tonight. Intercity Transit met on June 4th. We adopted our 2026-2029 Transportation Improvement Plan for projects with anticipated federal funding. We also adopted the Capital Improvement Plan for 2026 through 2030. Uh, we authorized the general manager to purchase an uplift, one Ford cargo van in the amount of $104,220. And we heard updates on the Dial-A-Lift, the Bus Buddy and travel training programs, as well as an update on the 2025-2030 Transit Development Plan. And on June 11th, the Lacy Olympia, Tom Water, Thurston County Clean Water Alliance Board met. Pretty short meeting, we, we reviewed proposed changes for updating and modernizing the board's financial related policies. We approved an amended interlocal agreement with the city of Olympia. We conducted a public hearing to receive comments related to the sale of the Mullen Road reclaimed water pipeline to Lacy, and there were no comments. And then we approved the sale of the pipeline to the city of Lacy. So we will soon be the proud owners of that pipeline. And that's my report.
Councilmember Vasquez.
All right, I have one report. Uh, the Thurston Regional Planning Council met on June 6th, and there were two main items that we worked on. One of them was addressing the departure of Mark Daly as executive director for TRPC. So Mark served with distinction for eight years and he, he went up to the Puget Sound Regional Council and we wish him all the best, but that leaves us without an executive director. So Allison Osterberg was asked to step in and cover down for about three days in between when Mark left and when we had our meeting. And then during the meeting on the 6th, we needed to actually make a formal, um, take an action for the board to select Allison and confirm her as the interim executive director during that time. We also reviewed and approved the selection criteria, some of the, the steps that we're going to take to seek out and fill that vacancy left by Mark's departure. And we needed to figure out how to pay Allison as well. So there were a couple of different actions that we took just to make sure that we were covered until we're able to launch a search for the next executive director of TRPC. And that is going to be happening soon. We're currently reviewing the executive director job description and we're going to be looking at the pay scale and comparing it to other local municipalities, other MPOs, to make sure that we're paying that position competitively. Because when Mark was here, he wasn't very interested in having us take a look at his pay to make sure he was getting paid competitively. I think he was more worried about the economic health or the financial health of the organization and not his own paycheck, which was commendable. But now we need to recruit for somebody new and we need to make sure that the wages we're posting are competitive so we get the right person. So that's in the works. We have a meeting next Monday to talk more about what the selection committee will look like, whether we're going to go out and use a contractor for the recruitment or if we're going to do it in-house with the, um, the person at TRPC that does all of their financials and HR stuff. Hopefully that person has the bandwidth to do that recruitment if we decide to do it in-house. Uh, the other topic that we talked about, the mayor already kind of gave a lot of background on that, but it's the regional transportation plan and we had a lot of public comment and discussion about the Log Cabin Road project. And we had a lot of public comment and discussion about the Log Cabin Road project. I think the, the context that you provided, Mayor, is very useful because this has been a long, a long issue, right? This, this regional arrangement to create a corridor through that part of the town and through the part, through that part of the county is, is not new. And, you know, as got talked about during the meeting, we, we built our piece. Like Lacey, a long time ago, invested the time, energy, resources, money to build the Martin Way, or excuse me, the, the Mullen portion of that corridor. One of the things that occurred to me as we were having this discussion, because what ended up happening is we had kind of a straw poll moment where people from Olympia were asking whether we would consider removing the project from the plan and maintaining the study. And so that was what was getting talked about. And we wanted to know what impact would that have on staff? Is it possible to remove the project but keep the study? One thing that came up was, you know, Olympia has expressed that they've removed it from their comprehensive plan. They've removed it from their transportation planning documents. And I think that in this space where regional cooperation is really important, we ignore what Olympia is telling us at our own peril, right? Because at the end of the day, the Log Cabin Road isn't going to happen if Olympia says no. So I think we need to keep that relationship, like that communication avenue, strong with them and not disregard that they're getting a lot of pressure from their community right now about this road. We know that we need to figure out how to mitigate the impacts of future congestion, the vehicle miles traveled and service level decreases that are going to impact Lacey if we don't do something in that space, right? They're going to impact Lacey and they're going to impact the county. Commissioner Mahia brought that up during the meeting as well, that there's going to be impacts to the county if nothing happens in that space. One of the questions I asked during the TRPC meeting was, if we remove that project from the project list, does that inhibit or diminish our ability to pursue the project in the future, right? Could we take it off the list, do the study, and then if the study says we still need a road there, does taking it off the list now cause any sort of harm or slow things down? And at the time, the answer was kind of like, well, no, we don't think so. But even since then, right, the staff was able to do some modeling for the TPB meeting and then TRPC staff actually talked with some of us who were getting ready to develop the agenda. One of the things that we didn't know then that I know now is that there is an easement through that, that parcel, a road easement. And if we take the project off, but keep the study on, that road easement kind of disappears. And so that was, that was kind of what I was trying to figure out is if we remove the project off of the plan, does it make it harder in the future to do something? And the answer might be yes. So I think that needs more conversation. I think, you know, maybe the Log Cabin Road isn't the only viable option and the study's worthwhile because there might be other options that would still meet our needs and the region's needs. But I think that the Log Cabin Road should still be within the scope of the study and I wouldn't want that to get taken out because we removed the project from the plan. And so like, we're getting more clarity on this, exactly what the impacts would be if we removed the project.
That's, that's what's so tough is because since these discussions have been happening for such a long time, I, I, I could have told you about the city of Olympia losing the easement, you know? And, and that's what's happened in some of these cases. There's been so much turnover on, you know, the Transportation Policy Board and the full board that they haven't been around for these longer discussions. And some of this information, some of this historical information has, has been lost. And so it's quick to make the wrong decision, you know?
But I also think that it's possible that the needs of the community change over time. And I don't, I don't want that to get lost either, that the situation that we were facing regarding like anticipated vehicle miles traveled or congestion, when we did the original analysis in the 90s, it might look different now. So I, I look forward to the results of that study because we don't know exactly what it's going to say. If we don't take final action on the regional transportation plan by July 11th though, and you mentioned, we've got this packed week where we're going to have a work session to talk about this, we're going to have a TPB meeting on the 9th, and then we're going to have the TRPC meeting on the 11th. If we don't take final action on that plan on the 11th, we're going to be in a challenging position. We actually have a one-day extension because our tier, our, our tip, RTP is due on July 10th. So if we don't have an approved finalized RTP, we don't have a meeting in August, like the TRPC doesn't meet in August, so we won't have a plan until at least September, which means that local jurisdictions, if you need to make changes or updates to local transportation projects, you will not be able to. So it will have impacts on not just us, but all of the jurisdictions if we don't take action on the RTP on July 11th. So I, I hope that we get the, the information, the data that we need to make some final decisions on July 11th. I also did want to say that, you know, we, we have talked a little bit about the language in the RTP. And I, I object to the framing that TRPC not choosing to overhaul the regional planned language, you know, removing, removing references to like equity or gender or climate action limits the options of local jurisdictions. I don't think that is accurate, at least not the way that I understand it, because if our local projects are in the RTP, that's what gets looked at, right? To make sure that the plans that we're asking for funding for are also in the regional transportation plan. So, you know, Mayor, you have mentioned like TRPC not stopping and scraping language out of the plan reduces the options for local jurisdictions. And I don't think that's the case because the, the projects are still going to be in both plans.
I'd like to, if I can make a point, I don't necessarily think it's...
Yeah. I'm happy to have this conversation.
I think it's that conversation that we should, we should have that conversation as a group before making a decision, I think is the point. And then what we come to as a whole is what we should move forward. And I really appreciate the conversation, especially being newer, that you guys have had on this project because this is like, I'm finding out more about this than, I didn't even know this road existed a week ago.
Well, it doesn't.
So, exactly, you know? And I found out more about it tonight, so I really appreciate it. And I think that was the intent of what Councilmember Greenstein was saying. It was like, these are things that like, we need to consider, like we're, we're making the decisions as a, as a whole, even if it might go against our own personal one. So I just want to say thank you guys for having that discussion. And I think that's being taken more seriously.
And I'm happy to talk about the technical stuff, you know, at our next meeting, you know, at our work session. Happy to have that conversation.
We have our next meeting on July 11th. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunning.
Well, mine will be much more exciting. Orca met on the 11th, mainly just budgetary. We approved the budget and actually 50,000 down from, from last year. So that was a pretty good thing. And there was a few minor adjustments. One, in, in just our policy of updating some employee language code to match up more with state coding for what type of employees handful, handful were. And then one having to do with investigation fees, which if you don't know about investigation fees, basically it's if a business were to need a permit for something and then wait till after they were to do it, then Orca goes and does an investigation to see if anything was done right. Well, previously, Orca had been paying for that out of their budget, but according to policy, they should actually be charging kind of a specific amount. It's not a large amount, but it's basically to encourage them to get the permits before they actually start doing the construction. And I wanted to make sure, one of the things that I brought up was that there was a slight amount of leeway in that policy if it's a, a first time, if they didn't know necessarily that they needed a permit. But the vast majority, like 90-some percent of cases were people who were, you know, repeat builders and knew they should, should be getting these permits and then just waited. So now it's like, all right, well, you've done this enough, we're actually going to charge you what we actually supposed to be charging you instead of taking it just out of their general, general fund budget. And then the VCB met today. We had a, a rather lengthy discussion. There was a, really a lot of recognition of some of the, I think, things they overlooked or mistakes or some of the, the issues that different municipalities, including us, have had with how they've ran their processes. And they've, you know, really committed to being more open about that and open with the new CEO about the conversations that have taken place over the last few weeks to make sure that, that that's kind of the emphasis on, on moving forward. I mean, it was a long conversation. I know we've talked about this in depth. So I, if there's any questions that you guys have, that might actually be a little more even helpful of specific things that you guys wanted to know about.
So the, the three cities in the county, the mayors and the chair of the county commission, we had, we had a meeting with the, with the leadership. And we were a little surprised about how surprised they seemed about why, you know, the issues that we're having, that we laid out. You know, I had never heard of a time where the full board hadn't approved a, a major decision like a, a hiring decision. That's like, I've never seen that before in my entire life, you know? The, the full board has, has the authority, not, not the executive committee, to, to make a hire like that. So that was just, you know, one of, of many things that we sort of brought up. We, we did sort of charge, give them a, some homework sort of to come back on saying, you know, what, the way you've done things need to change unless you, unless you change the way you've been doing it, I, I don't know how weird this, this relationships can be mended. So what we decided at that, that time is that we would sort of get together and more clearly lay out our expectations. And so we, we know, we know, you know, there's going to need to be further conversations on, on this going forward. And I'm happy to work with you to sort of fill you in on, on some of that as those things are being developed.
Yeah. And what I really reiterated to them was that, you know, especially with a new CEO coming in, that there's not really like an extended timeline on building this bridge back, like this needs to be, you know, forefront. And there needs to be a really expedited direction of what the VCB is and what direction they're going in. They have a lot of faith in the new person coming in. The hiring decision, you know, kind of what was explained to us had to do with the search firm and the NDAs and them not thinking that they couldn't really violate some of those NDAs. And they freely admitted that they shouldn't, like they, they messed that process up. Not really any going back on that, you know? But I, you know, being part of, I really do actually enjoy being part of that committee and I want to see it reach its full potential. And so I'm, you know, I told them, I'm committed to being on you guys just as much as, as I always have. And I think that's just something that, you know, we need to do and, and the municipalities need to just, as much as, like I said, there, there was a lot of communication with the VCB, but there wasn't a lot of collaboration. And I think that's what was really missing with them and that's what I explained and that's the direction that it needs to be a much more collaborative effort and focusing on things that we can do. And, and I told you, you know, this FIFA project coming up is going to be a big test on, well, what can this actually be, you know? And what, what lessons can we learn from, from this organization? And this is, this is kind of the test, really, you know? This is a big, this isn't going to come along again, you know, very, very soon. This is going to be the biggest thing, it's going to be presented to them. So if they can make this happen, I think that would go a long way. All of my meetings for next month are, are canceled, so they don't have any. But, so you won't get a report from me for a while. But there is, if you guys are interested, a community stakeholder meeting with the new CEO on July 8th at Anthony's. The community stakeholder one's from 4:30 to 6:00. So if you guys are interested in attending that and meeting, meeting him.
And just so, Councilmember, too, we are working with the VCB to schedule a time in August for VCB update and also to introduce the new CEO as well. So there would be an opportunity at a work session and I think we're looking at August 26th right now.
And they, the one thing they did say about, they said that this search, they got a lot more candidates this time than last and, and a lot more qualified candidates. So they actually, you know, from, from what I hear, they did have a really hard time actually narrowing down their candidates. They said last time they actually didn't find, this is when they hired the previous CEO, didn't find one, they had to go research or research, and then that's when they found it. So, so it seems as if, you know, they had a much bigger talent pool to choose from. They just should have, you know, really included more people in on that, on that process. And I think we all would have felt a lot better about it. It could have most likely come down to the same exact conclusion, but we all would have been able to move forward a lot faster, so. And that's what I have to report.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it is 8:30 and the council will now meet an executive session to discuss performance of a public employee. Is Councilmember going to be attending remotely?
He indicated he was not.
Okay. Well, the time now is, is 8:31 and we're going to adjourn, so just give us like nine minutes. So we'll, we'll go from 8, 8:40 to at least 9:10. That gives us a half hour for the executive session. So we're going to adjourn until 9, 8:40 for the executive session and we'll return at 9:10.
And are we...
Yes, we're done here. For...
Yes, we're getting ready.
Well, it is almost 9:10. We're actually going to, Council's going to extend the executive session for a period of 10 minutes, so until 9:20. So we'll still be in execution session until 9:20.
Thank you.
Well, it is almost 9:10. We're actually going to, Council's going to extend the executive session for a period of 10 minutes, so until 9:20.